Call the order, Town of Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting, February 24th, 2022. Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Kinzinger.
Present.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Heppertly.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Councilmember Packard.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Present.
Mayor Pagoda.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. This time I'd like to invite down Elder Win Speck from Countryside Chapel for our invocation. Welcome, sir.
May I start by saying thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for inviting me here today. Please bow our heads as we pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, thank you. Thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today for your many and abundant blessings, and thank you for our mayor and town council members who have accepted the responsibility of the leadership of our growing community. Our town of Prescott Valley is the premier place to live, and we ask that its future always be a major consideration for our leadership. We ask that you continue to guide and direct our leaders and give them the wisdom and strength they need as they make decisions on the agenda presented to them today. Father, we ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Sir, will you please lead us into pledge?
Everybody take time to look at the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir, thank you. Item three, proclamation, Youth Art Month, March 2022.
Whereas Youth Art Month has been observed nationally and in many foreign countries since 1961 and has gained wide acceptance, and whereas art dedication is a viable academic endeavor and contributes to educational benefits to all elementary, middle, and secondary students to develop interests, skills, and aptitudes that will last a lifetime, including the following: Art dedication develops students' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities. Art dedication teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities. Art dedication gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs. Art dedication reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects. Art dedication interrelates students' learning in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics. And whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experience in all students' education, and whereas the Town of Prescott Valley and the Art and Culture Division support continued arts education in public art programs, now therefore I call Pagoda Mayor of Prescott Valley, Arizona, to hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 as Youth Art Month and encourage all citizens to join us in celebrating youth art in Prescott Valley.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for celebrating the youth and arts in our community once again this year. And the Town of Prescott Valley Arts and Culture Division is excited to host the 18th Annual Student Showcase that will be going up here in our Prescott Valley Public Library starting on March 7th. And we will continue to celebrate youth in the arts in April with this year's Family Arts Festival and Extravaganza on April 9th. And that will be highlighting local youth dance troupes, bands, choirs, and art classrooms with student-made art and activities. So we'll love it for you to join us and continue to celebrate youth in the arts with Youth Arts Month. Thank you very much.
Moving on, item four, call the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any persons wishing to address the council must complete a speaker card located inside the entrance of the council chambers and deliver it to the town clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Clerk?
Steve Karros.
Good evening, Steve Karros, Wronghorn Ranch. The following press release was submitted this afternoon on the behalf of my campaign. Upon the advice of my attorney, I, Steve Karros, am officially withdrawing my candidacy see from the Town of Prescott Valley 2022 race for mayor. My decision is primarily based upon threats I have received, including anonymous profanity-laced phone calls threatening to kick my ass. A report has been filed with Prescott Valley Police Department. I have also received three certified letters from two different attorneys threatening to ruin me financially if I continue to discuss the drought and other water-related issues, as well as local public safety situations on the Internet. It is apparent that even considering the Arizona anti-slap laws, to speak against the status quo is unsafe in Prescott Valley. It is with great sadness that I am standing here before town staff and council to declare that we do not have free and fair elections here in Prescott Valley. It was my desire as a candidate to see several concerning situations in our town government be resolved, including the inappropriate election influencing. It was also my desire to ensure town council be held to the standard found in the town code of conduct and ethics. A couple of examples of recent contact, uh, conduct violations are the tampering with our police department in both personnel matters and daily operations. These are the role and duties of the town manager, not the town council, and for good reason. Second example of violations include inappropriate behaviors on the Internet, including but not limited to posting under assumed names while personally attacking and castigating a number of citizen constituents with erroneous information, including myself. And these are but two examples that time will allow for. I support a strong town manager form of government over all departments which is intended to avoid the potential, the appearance of, or actual influence of politically motivated officials both elected and employed here in Prescott Valley. So for the protection of my family and myself, I'm stepping out of the political race. I remain strong in spirit and in steadfast support of town manager Gilbert Davidson and encourage each and every official and employee to do the same for the betterment of Prescott Valley on so many important, important levels. Let me know if you need anything.
Thank you. Clerk, anyone else?
No one else.
All right. Moving on to item five, council comments, communications, summary of current events. Councilman Dickinson, you'll start us off.
I don't have anything of, of substance this evening other than to thank you all for being here this evening. And I've been chilled to the bone ever since I woke up this morning and hope that you all are staying warm but enjoying the snow. Thank you.
Councilwoman Heppertly. Vice Mayor.
Hi, everybody. Welcome. First off, I would like to recognize Bruce Evans. Bruce, can you stand up and wave? Bruce has just been or on this agenda is recommending to be approved for the Board of Adjustments. And so we welcome him and thank you for your interest in volunteering, Bruce. Also, some exciting things on the consent calendar is the Starlight Drive improvements. I want to give a shout out to the county and to Mary Mallory to help for help and thanking her for helping us with flood control money. And then also very exciting outdoor basketball courts at George Anderson and Sunflower Park and a multi-use path to go with pickleball court at Antelope Park. Yay. Thank you.
Did it?
That's it.
All right. Councilman, please. All good. Moving on to item seven, consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. I'm sorry, Mr. Davidson, I completely skipped over you.
No problem, Mr. Mayor. I was like, get off scot-free. No major report. I do want to just, if, uh, mayor and councilmembers, a thank you, a huge thank you to our Public Works, Parks, and our Police Department yesterday and starting the day before in storm preparations. They did an excellent job, were out making sure that our major roadways were appropriately addressed and just really appreciative of all the hours that were put in by all of those crews. So, thank you.
All right. Now we're going on to item seven. Consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Clerk, will you please, I believe you have something to add or clarify, I should say.
There's something I want to clarify. On agenda item 7A, the regular town council meeting minutes for January 27, when you click on the attachment online, it reads January 10, but the actual printed minutes that the mayor's gonna sign tonight does read January 27. It was just a little typo.
All right. With that being said, if there's nothing else to remove, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda by electronic vote.
I, Slacker.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And I do want to extend the vice mayor's words to Mr. Evans. Thank you for stepping up, being a part of the town. I know you are by far my favorite Canadian. You, you are, sir. Thank you very much again. Moving on, item eight, new Series 9 liquor license for Maverick, public hearing. I'll open it now.
Maverick is seeking recommendation from council for a Series 9 liquor license for their new location at 1341 North Prescott Country Club Boulevard. A public notice for this hearing was posted at the location for 20 days and our office did not receive any comments pro or con recommendation. Town council can either recommend for or against issuance of this liquor license and the ultimate determination is going to be made by the Arizona Department of Liquor License Control after receiving the town's recommendations.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment one way or the other about this item? With that being said, I'll be closing the public hearing. Move on to item 8B, new Series 9 liquor license, Maverick Inc., number 672. With no other additional information or questions from council, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to recommend the approval of Series... 09 liquor license for Maverick Incorporated, number 672, by electronic vote.
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gonzalez, welcome. You're here for item 8C, Final Development Plan FDP 19-007, Jasper Phase 2.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. Uh, this request is by Jasper Echo Development LLC for approval of Final Development Plan FDP 19-007 for Jasper Phase 2, consistent of 290 lots on 127 acre, generally located to the south of State Route 89A, west of the current Granville subdivision, north of Jasper, Phase 1, and Glassford Hill. On March 27, 2014, the council adopted ordinance 791, annexing 1,259 acres in sections nine and four. In the process, the council also approved resolution 1873, adopting a plan to provide Jasper with appropriate levels of infrastructure and service within 10 years of the date of annexation. At its April 7, 2014, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and recommended approval of a fine, of a development master plan, which was called at that time Glassford Heights, with 3,587 residential units on 1,259 acres of annexed area. That master plan was accompanied by a request by Arizona Echo Development LLC for a zoning map change from RCU 70 to residential single-family limited, residential services, residential mixed, uh, mixed use, residential multifamily, residential services, and public lands. At its regular meeting on May the 8th, on 22, 2014, the council held a public hearing adopting ordinance 792, changing the zoning map as recommended. On March 27, 22, 2018, the town council adopted resolution 2040, approving a development plan agreement with Arizona Echo Development for the Jasper project pursuant to Arizona State Statute 9-500.05. On January the 14th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a request by Arizona Echo Development and for preliminary development plan for the Jasper 2, uh, phase. After approval of that PDP, the applicant applied to the Arizona Department of Water Resource for a certificate of assured water supply based on affluent water credits. AW, ADWR approved that certificate, and I brought that certificate so you can see it. Certificate cause number 27-701155 on August the 24th, 2021. A traffic study for the Jasper development identifies the need to extend a roadway from Highway 69, Stone Ridge Drive intersection to the Jasper development prior to construction of Jasper's 700 dwelling unit. Approving, approval of Phase 2 will bring the total number of approved units to 652, so that extension would be complete before Jasper 3 is approved. Uh, the completion of this roadway will significantly diminish the impact on Prescott East Highway. The current zoning permits single-family residential units, and it is consistent with the general plan 2025 designation. In it, in a previous action, the council has considered and approved a development agreement for Jasper addressing timely and financing of public improvements needed for the project, including water storage, delivery, wastewater collection, parks, trails, and public property, and, and as well as off-site and on-site roadway construction. Staff recommends approval of Final Development Plan FDP 19-007 for the Jasper 2 phase. Happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Sir, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer it, or if it's a Mr. Davis question, but it was my understanding that they were gonna start Jasper Parkway sooner than later in regards to the requirements of the 700 homes, or has that been changed?
Well, they're gonna actually start it at, at Phase 2, and it's gonna be intricately so that they can reach the development, so they can go through and start developing Phase 2, but it will be completed by Phase 3.
Gotcha.
I just wanted to clarify. So, final development plan for Phase 1 was approved on March 22nd of 18, and then they didn't actually get their assured water supply for Phase 1 until over a year later. But now, what you just showed is they already have their assured water supply for Phase 2.
Yes, council.
Okay. That was, that was just my question. I was thinking to myself earlier when I was going through this, so I'm happy to see that.
Right. And, and that's why I actually brought it, because when the staff, the staff report was written, you're correct, that we actually talked about Phase 1, and I thought it was important to bring the approval for Phase 2.
Thank you.
And thank you to the council of Kinzinger. Um, we had that conversation before the meeting. I thought it was important to add it.
Anything else?
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor, or in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign resolution number 2022 through 2234, approving Final Development Plan FDP 19-007 by electronic vote.
I, Slacker.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 8D, hot milk, I'm not hot milk, hot melt crack seal program, spring 2022. Mr. Davis, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council. The item you have before you is our, uh, annual crack melt application. What this is, is typically hire labor out. We do, through competitive state contract, we buy the material and get it delivered. And then we, I'd like to send out for bid to get a contractor to install the crack seal into our asphaltic roadway. So, we did a large fall program this year, and in preparation of our typical summer maintenance application of a seal, we'd like to do crack seal. Well, we sent out a small spring program, and, uh, we found out that, uh, bids came back from two contractors way more than staff had anticipated, about three times more than anticipated. So, it is overbid. I do want to clarify, we did add an addendum. There's been some requests for additional information and background that you received a hard copy prior to the meeting. So, you can see that listed there where the contractors' bids did come in at, and of course, staff's anticipation. We would spend around $35,000 for this work, and it's just way too much. So, what we do have planned is we do have a few roads that we'd like to do a very substantially abbreviated program, and there is a cooperative contract through Yavapai County we can utilize. So, we have some of the material at the Streets Yard. We can actually do what we need to do in a much smaller scale and stay within budget. So, that's staff's recommendation at this point. So, stay with me here. What we would like to do is, it's staff's recommendation to reject all the bids received for the hot mix, uh, crack seal installation. So, if you see the staff recommended motion, that would be to reject all bids received for installation of, of, uh, crack seal material, and that would be a yes vote, is staff's recommendation. Any questions I can answer?
Vice Mayor.
Thank you for explaining that, Norm. Um, so this was only for the labor, not for the material, because we buy the materials separately.
Correct, and get it delivered.
And what you're proposing now is to use our staff to do the labor?
No, through a cooperative contract through Yavapai County. Uh, we have...
So their staff will do, or their contractor?
Their contractor. With the cooperative contract, we just say we'd like to use that same contract. So, it's just, and as I mentioned, a very much abbreviated, uh, program. In short, we have 20 pallets down at Streets that'll be just fine. We're gonna use only about five pallets to finish up all the streets we like to enter in our summer program.
Right. And so, what, how are we so far off between 35 and 88 in the engineer estimate?
Well, as you can see, we live in very different times. Um, in the last few months, you can see it's been in my career, I haven't really experienced the escalation in costs. We rely upon construction costs. You're seeing gas going up about a dollar in the last six months. We try to put those escalators in, but keep in mind, we build a budget at this time for next year. And we do know what this particular labor's worth. As you know, the labor pool can be thin. Um, the reason we order the crack seal material, you're not guaranteed. If you got labor, you don't have material to put in. So, you're seeing all kinds of different, um, markets out there. And yes, we get fooled. Uh, the next item, we will talk about in a word of a project, that, uh, the engineering estimate is nothing more than what the market was, we can anticipate. So, there is a crystal ball at times. Good, good, good point, but we're seeing a very different. And of course, it would be staff's recommendation. If we don't feel like there's good value for our residents, we're not gonna recommend what we think is industry standard. We have different options, and that's the value we have here, is we can look for that and get best value for our residents that we point out.
I appreciate that. So, if there aren't any other questions, I'd like to make a motion to reject all bids by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote. Clerk, if it's easier, we can go via voice.
It's working now. Sorry. The passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Davis, you're up for item 8E, Florentine Road Improvement Project, CIP number S446.
Yes, Mayor, council. This is a much anticipated Florentine roadway. It's actually, we determine a rehabilitation project. The project limits is... The project limits is from Navajo to Grizzly Bear. If you could pull up the exhibit, that will give you good perspective. It's about 3,000 feet of, um, project, and I do want to point out, this is a complete rehabilitation, which includes, as you can see in the exhibit here, lots of the underground utilities, actually, a town facility is going to be underground storm drain, new water and sewer lines in this particular alignment, uh, in, in addition to rehabilitation of pavement and a much better pavement section than what we have out there. So, uh, what it does include too is a sidewalk on the north side. We have a long-term, uh, development agreement with a developer that actually completed there, you see where Dollar General is listed, uh, when they did that particular development, he put, uh, rather than doing it at the time, we said, "Look, we anticipate, uh, doing a roadway rehabilitation here." So he put money basically up, and of course, the downturn happened, that was 2005, we know about the downturn, we just never could get it done, we all anticipated getting it done. The beauty of this particular project is we get to actually, uh, complete that particular obligation and put curb gutter and sidewalk in for those commercial developments. Uh, council may also be aware too, there's a large apartment complex, uh, currently being constructed on the same alignment, so this will really be a nice improvement in that area for, you know, the public amenities in that area. You've probably seen too, the gas company, with any of these big rehabilitation projects, there's also other utilities that get out in front of our utility replacement. So the gas company's already started, and I know APS, excuse me, and even the, um, phone company has actually been out there and done some relocations, so quite a substantial rehabilitation. Uh, this one's very similar to the Sunset Lane project we had great success with a year ago, and so similar in, in scope with a total rehab. So be about a year in scope to get the particular work done. You'd like to point out, we did have a public meeting in November, took the, uh, you know, basically 90% plans out to residents and adjacent businesses, let them know what they expect, and we took comments and incorporated them into plans before we sent out for bid. And, uh, one thing to, uh, point out too, this project, uh, we originally had funded with some different funding sources, but the federal ARPA money that's come to the town last July, we're able to apply 1.5 million of that, uh, is, um, applicable, and you can see in the fiscal analysis where that particular ARPA grant funding is being applied to this project, in addition to some HER funding. And I'd like to point out, um, my, uh, partner in, uh, Public Improvements, Neil Wadsworth, typically I'd do the presenting, um, and overshadow him, but he's got water and sewer improvements out there too, and you can see, he's got some substantial water and sewer improvements there. You know, speak a little bit, I know there's actually a sewer obligation, that part of Stone Ridge obligation way upstream, well, they had to upsize one of these lines. So do like to point out, this is a very neat project for engineer, public infrastructure lake, uh, we'd like to do. There's lots of infrastructure improvements that is part of the growth of the town that accommodates, uh, continued growth, and actually, growth paying for growth is what you're seeing a lot here. So you get the impact for you from Stone Ridge, they do the analysis that your sewer system, uh, needs to be upsized, and certainly, you don't want to cut the pavement after or do a simple one, so, uh, we can leave some of those, and this project all came together with some really neat improvements. So, aggregally, the bids came in at $3.6 million for this 3,000 feet. Uh, you can see in the, uh, staff report attachments, I got very good bids from local contractors, uh, within what we anticipated the bids were going to be, so great local competition among our, a couple, uh, star contractors, and you can see the bids there, and the, uh, low is actually, um, Earth Resources, at basically $3.6 million. Uh, they've finished, uh, you may recall, the Viewpoint Connector last year about this time, very successful project, very good contractor, so, uh, staff's, um, looking forward to having them construct this contract. And, uh, as with all construction contracts, uh, the design engineer, we do a construction period services contract, uh, and you can see that in your staff report for $360,000 to help manage the construction and surveying and like to manage this particular project. So as I mentioned, the gas company's already out there, we've gotten, um, you know, public notices out, had the public meeting I talked about in November, and we've gotten, uh, postcards out, and we really want to stay in touch. We're real sensitive to the businesses in this particular area, making sure we maintain access. Big project, but, uh, we'll, we'll get through it, and we anticipate, uh, in November, late this year, that we'll, we'll be done by about Christmas time fully, so, very, very good rehabilitation project. That's all the highlights. Any questions I can answer?
Mr. Davis, I have a, a question. There is a, uh, large apartment complex going on there in between, I believe it's Majesty and what's Bob Drive here, basically where it says proposed sidewalk north side. How much did they contribute to, sidewalks or...
They contributed way back in 2005.
That's when they contributed back.
So when they basically, HSA subdivided, developed those roadways, and their obligation was to put those frontage improvements in there.
Gotcha.
And of course, uh, we said, "Well, we don't want to have those not matching you", you know, at the time, we anticipated within five years we'd be doing the project. Well, we know what happened to the economy, so obviously, um, they did pay that obligation back in 2005.
And do you know, sir, off the top of your head, would sidewalks also extend down Majesty for this project, because it is, it's fairly larger? Would they just be adding their sidewalk to Florentine? In regards to what they're developing already there?
You know, I can't speak with confidence, um, what, what their obligation's been, 'cause those are, I know Bob Drive is a private road, and I don't know about Majesty, I haven't been familiar with that.
Okay, that's fine. Awesome, sir, thank you.
Is the sidewalk extending the full 3,000 feet, or is it just gonna be where that's already been contributed to?
No, 3,000 feet, all the way to connect up, uh, down to Grizzly Bear.
So that'll be going all the way to, just basically Canyon View?
Correct.
And I cannot say enough, Mr. Davis, how important this project's been to me. I, I spoke about this for a long time, I know this council has recognized the need for Florentine, and this is just an example of the council recognizing and the town recognizing that all of our citizens are important. Doesn't matter if you live in a subdivision that was just recently built, or a duplex that's been around since 1975. It is important and that we care about those citizens, and I drive by here a lot, and you see a lot of people walking, pushing a stroller, and this is just so important. And I just want to thank you for that.
That's a good comment, Mayor, that linkages are very important. I know as staff, uh, when you get these, I'm gonna call them one of the old neighborhoods of roadways, the pavement section just isn't enough out there. We have trouble even patching the, I call them squishies, you know, it's just hard even to patch it. It's a very good project to do this rehabilitation, and it's timed, this road's been here a long time, and we've seen increased, uh, you know, trips with the schools and increased, you know, that's industrial area, uh, down to serve a lot of those businesses, so, very good project for our residents.
So, Mr. Davison, what Councilman Heppertly said, between Navajo and Bob, there's gonna be sidewalk as well, even though that parcel's vacant?
Sorry, Doc. There's your sidewalk.
Was that for Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'm for sure.
Anyway, sorry about that. So, when they come in and develop, they will reimburse us, they will pay for the sidewalk we put in?
No, they paid back in 2005. We've been holding their money since that time.
To extend from east of the Dollar General store is what she's asking?
Correct.
So it went in as part, when that track went in?
Correct.
Okay.
So is any, you know, growth pays for growth, and that's their obligation, was part of the rezoning at which time they develop, and I remember at the time in 2005, they really, you know, felt like, yes, this is gonna go right away, and you'll see development there, and it's taken this long, and that's the market sometimes, yeah.
Thank you. So, Mr. Davison, I would love it when we get this project done to have, like, a little barbecue opening, 'cause I see two vacant lots right here maybe we could use, and we can get those businesses to help us do stuff and have more than just a ribbon cutting, have something a little bit nicer for those residents, 'cause they will have gone through a lot of inconvenience and, um, but this is major curb appeal and major, you know, safety and everything. I, I'm just really excited about this project.
Vice Mayor, if I could, you know, cap your comments too, what's important to us too is, uh, we do have the all, uh, opportunities for other alternate routes, so those residents will probably use Yavapai, so...
Right.
I would imagine all of them will use Yavapai and hopefully stay out of the construction, which will help the construction progress. In addition, you do have the businesses that front that particular area, and we're very aware of trying to maintain access. That's why we have, I've mentioned, you know, the, uh, meetings before the final design in addition to, um, there's a project sign that's been put up for about the last month or two, direct phone contact, not only the contractor, but our staff, project manager, Ron Pine, to say, "Yes, what's your question? What's happening out there? We'll be right out to address any need you have for access." Very much.
One more question for the town manager. Can we get a copy of those apartments, the site plan of the apartments? 'Cause I think that must have been a long time ago, I don't remember it.
No, a long time ago.
So if we could get that site plan in our boxes, that would be great. Thank you.
Guess we can do that.
I just have a comment.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yeah, reference the barbecue that Lori just, uh, requested. Uh, Norm mentioned that this, uh, project won't be complete until November or December, and I'm thinking about the weather, and I also remember the day that we had the ribbon cutting for Sunset and how very cold that was. So, um, we might want to reevaluate that in, when the time comes.
Anything else from Mr. Davis?
Uh, just one more, uh, statement as well. So this will look at the final product, a lot like Sunset was, when it, as it's rehab habilitated, right? So it's gonna be very nice, and that's what's exciting is, I know it's a pain while it's undertaking it, um, but once it's the final product, I think everybody forgets about how hard it was to get in place once it is so nice, so...
But important to note, no, no sidewalk and curb and gutter on the south side, that would be up to the business community there.
Right, so thank you so much for all your pre-planning and your hard work.
With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to and enter into a contract with Earth Resources Corporation for construction of the Florentine Road Improvement Project, CIP number S446, in the amount of $3,658,653, and approve the amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement with Dave and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $360,000 by electronic vote.
I'd like a...
Clerk, please call the vote.
The passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Moving on, item nine.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The passes unanimously.
You haven't even voted yet. Someday we're gonna say no.
Thanks, ma'am. Everyone, hey, thanks for coming out tonight, stay warm and drive safe.